City Council for the 2022-2026 term of office. We would like to begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Molochs, the Bay of Quinney, and the community of Tiandanega. It is great to see so many people here today. My name is Rod Bovee. I'm Chief Administrative Officer for the city, and I'll be your emcee for today. I would like to extend a special thank you to the Bayside Secondary School Trio led by Adam Gibson for providing the musical prelude to today's celebration. I would like to invite all who are able to rise while council is piped into the council Thank you. Please be seated, everyone. We are fortunate today to have several dignitaries and area mayors joining us. I'll be calling on them soon to bring greetings to the new mayor and council, but first I have a letter that I'd like to read from our Member of Parliament, Ryan Williams, who could not be here today. Mayor Ellis and members of Belleville City Council, I would like to extend my most sincere congratulations. Mayor Ellis, for both of us having been around the horseshoe and in Ottawa, it gives a unique perspective. I know you understand what Belleville and the Bay of Quinney region need. I am very much looking forward to working in partnership with you as we tackle the issues concerning the city. For all of Belleville City Council, I am sure while campaigning, you have heard from residents about their concerns. There are huge issues facing our region. It will take collaboration from all of council and from all parties in Ottawa. We have our work cut out for us, but I am up for the challenge. I look forward to working with Mayor Ellis and each and every councillor to ensure housing, homelessness, infrastructure needs, and economic development are front and center each and every day. Please reach out to me at any time. Sincerely, Ryan Williams, MPP Bay of Quinney. I'd now like to call on Adam Bramburger on behalf of MPP Todd Smith.
Thank you and good morning, your worship, Mayor-elect and councillors-elect. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of MPP Smith this morning for this historic day in the friendly city, as we mark the swearing-in of a new council, tradition that dates back, I understand, to 1850 in the incorporated city, much earlier in Thurlo and Singleton's River Myers Creek. Likely since those days, as you all know, local politics has been something that captured the attentions of citizens more than most subjects, though sometimes we take that for granted. The decisions you make are so close to the people's lives day-to-day. George Burns once quipped, "It's too bad that people who know how to run the country are too busy driving taxi cabs or cutting hair." Many talk, but fewer do. But so many high-quality people are here on this incoming council today is a real credit to you. It speaks highly of your character and service. Reminds me of the great speech by the American President Teddy Roosevelt, who noted, "The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, who strives and airs and spends himself in a worthwhile cause." And that's paraphrasing, but it was a great, great thought. Those who know the high achievement or only fail after daring greatly. You'll have highs and lows, that's to be expected. Thank you in advance for your service. Congratulate the council previous for their hard work through COVID, keeping the city moving forward with the Northeast Industrial Park, Bell Boulevard, lots of expansion, and we thank them. To all councillors coming in today, we have a lot of incumbents, we have a lot of familiar faces, and of course, your worship with your time in Ottawa and your time here before, your leadership will be invaluable. We wish you all well as you continue to move Belleville forward as one of the fastest-growing cities in Canada. We're looking forward to seeing your collective vision on issues like housing, economic growth, and the health and wellness of your residents. On behalf of MPP Smith, I can tell you that the province, the provincial government, and his constituents in the office are willing partners, as is he. Anytime you need anything from the province, please don't hesitate to call MPP Smith or our team and reach out. I'd like to extend best wishes to you all for your inaugural meeting today, the four years ahead, and wish you very happy holidays in the months ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I'd now like to call on Mark Handley on behalf of MPP Rick Brusay's office.
Rick would like to apologize for his absence. He would have really liked to have been here, but the legislature is in session, so he would like me to send congratulations to all of you on your new roles on this council, and especially to your worship. Rick really wanted me to stress the fact that we're in a partnership, province and municipalities, and would really like to work together and looking very forward to a prosperous, healthy, and safe four-year term in the future. Thank you and congrats to all.
Thank you, Mark. Warden Rick Phillips is unable to attend today due to illness, and he did ask me to pass along congratulations and best wishes to mayor and council. I'd like next to call on Mayor Steve Ferguson from Prince Edward County.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation, your worship, members of council. Good morning, and thank you very much for the invitation to attend. I attended this ceremony four years ago, as well as one of my first speaking engagements, but it's my honor to bring to you greetings today on behalf of Prince Edward County, our municipal staff, and of course, our new council. Congratulations to Mayor Ellis and councillors on your election to office. The county has enjoyed a very strong, long, and rewarding working relationship with the city of Belleville. We have the opportunity to strengthen that relationship for our mutual benefit over the new term. Both of our councils have been renewed with new members that will bring fresh ideas to the table. I look forward to exploring new ways we can work together over the next four years, and I'm confident our special neighborly relationship will only grow and flourish in the coming years, and the Bay of Quinney region will be better because of it. Thank you all again, and best wishes during your term of office.
Thank you, Mayor Ferguson. I'd now like to call upon Mayor Jim Harrison from Quinney West.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and congratulations, Neil, as you and I have known each other for a long time, which is obvious, I'm younger than you are, but that's okay. But that's okay, you'll catch me. And it is a pleasure to be here, because as we all know, Quinney West is the best. But the other side of everything is that we're stronger together. We're stronger together, and there's so many things that we share on a regular basis. And I thank you, Mayor, and council members, both mature and the newer ones, of course, who have a lot of ideas, and that's great for all of us. But I really wish you well in the future, and as I said, there's so many things we share, our fire departments, our police departments, paramedics, roads, everything, and we work together for the benefit of the Bay of Quinney region. That's exactly what we do, and there are ways, and yes, what's ahead of us, there are all kinds of challenges ahead of us, and as I come in on Loyalist Road and on the west side and look at all the nice expensive equipment on the west side called international junk, you know. But I also see the sign that says $2.40 per liter of diesel fuel. That's the point that's really going to hurt all of us, so any way we can continue to work together to provide the services that we need and citizens require. Thank you very much, and we're available, you know that. I'm only the mayor, but there are a lot of people who do all the work, and I appreciate that, and I'm going to stay out of the road and let them keep doing it, and I'm sure you will too. Thank you, and have a great four years.
Thank you, Mayor Harrison. I'd like, next, like to call on Mayor Brian Ostrander from Brighton.
Good morning, Mayor-elect and council-elect. It's my great privilege to be able to bring greetings on behalf of Brighton Council and the good people of our community. Mayor Ellis, Brighton and Belleville have forged a good partnership over the many years, and I look forward to nurturing that partnership, especially in the economic development sphere. As the big kid on the block, on the Quinney block, we depend on Belleville to help bring some clout to our partners at the province and in Ottawa, and I can't wait to leverage your relationships, especially in Ottawa, to our mutual benefit. There is much to do for the Quinney region as we continue to work toward the regional work we have to do to attract manufacturing businesses, develop our workforce, grow our tourism sector, and we must speak with one regional voice on issues like 401 expansion and a better development regime that includes climate health, public consultation, and the ability to appeal. I look forward to working with you and the city of Belleville as we continue to make Quinney an advantageous place to live, work, play, and learn. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Ostrander. I would now like to call on Colonel Commander Leif Dahl for Eight-Wing Trenton.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, council. Congratulations on the recent election. Morning, everybody. Yeah, Belleville is the home of many, I would venture to say thousands, of men and women of Eight-Wing, so it's, I want to say thanks to past and future council and mayors for their leadership and where you're taking the city. It is a great city, I actually reside in it, so does Chief Hanson, so we truly appreciate that. So, congratulations on behalf of Eight-Wing, and I caught the elevator this morning with Monique, and they reminded me that a few weeks ago, my firefighter team cooperated with Monique's firefighter team on quite a fire, from my understanding, so that was beautiful to see, and you and you all can actually count on Eight-Wing again for the continuous partnership. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Commander. I would now like to invite members of council to take their oath of office. That will be administered by our city clerk, Matt McDonald.
So, just ask the council to repeat after me. I state your name, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the city of Belleville, do solemnly promise and declare that...
I have a solemn promise and declare that I am the office of councillor in the municipality of the city of Belleville, do solemnly promise and declare that...
I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I will truly, faithfully, impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
All right, I would now like to invite Mayor-elect Neil Ellis to take his oath of office, administered by Neil's eldest daughter, Madison Mather, who is also the manager of Legislative Services and city clerk for Northumberland County.
I, Neil Ellis, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of the city of Belleville, do solemnly promise and declare that...
I, Neil Ellis, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of the city of Belleville, do solemnly promise and declare that...
I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner.
I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
I will faithfully and bear the allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign of the time being.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you, Madison. I would now ask councillors and senior management to stand, and I would call on councillors Paul Carr, Lisa Ann Chatten, and Garnet Thompson to join us at the front of the council table Time for speech. Please join me in welcoming Mayor Neil Ellis, 77th mayor of the city of Belleville.
It's great to be home. Distinguished guests, esteemed... distinguished guests, esteemed members of council, family, friends, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning and a warm welcome to all. Thank you for sharing in today's inaugural meeting of council. I am deeply honored by your presence. I would like to extend a special welcome to some of our local dignitaries here today. It is my pleasure to introduce my friends and mayors. Mayor Jim Harrison, Quinney West. Jim, round of applause for you. Mayor Steve Ferguson, who I've worked with a lot. Steve, thanks for coming today. Mayor Brian Ostrander, Brighton. Brian, thanks for being here today. We've got a lot of work to do. And Colonel Dahl, Eight-Wing CFB Trenton, thanks for your service. I'd like to recognize former Mayor Tasso Christopher and his wife Betty in the audience. Mayor Christopher. Who have joined us so graciously today. Also, a big shout-out to former councillor Jackie Daniels, who's in the audience. And former councillor Tom Lafferty. Without further ado, I now have the great privilege of introducing members of the 22 to 26 Belleville Council. Councillor Tyler Ralston, good day. Good to be back, eh? Councillor Garnet Thompson, good to be back, Garnet. Councillor Chris Millett, good to be back, Chris. Councillor Sean Kelly, good to see you, Sean. And the welcome to the horseshoe, councillor Lisa Ann Chatten. Lisa Ann. Also councillor Barbara Inray Miller, welcome here, Brooke. And finally, councillor Catherine Brown, Catherine, welcome. Congratulations, councillor, on your much, councillors, on your much deserved success. Running for public office is hard work that involves sacrificing time and energy with family and friends. Today is a shared victory, so let's have a big round of applause for everyone who's supported us on this journey to City Hall. To my wife Susan, sons Zachary, and daughters Madison and Abby, your unwavering love and support is my greatest source of strength and joy. You inspire me every day, and you are the real secret to my success. I would not be here where I am today without you. A special thank you to Madison for swearing me in today. This was a very special moment that I will remember forever. Standing before me, or standing before you today is really a full circle moment for me. I feel very excited to be joining councillor Thompson around the horseshoe once again. I look forward to building positive relationships with each of you, and I am excited by unique insights you bring to Belleville City Council. Today, users in a new era of mutual respect and collaboration at City Hall. We're going to build a high-performance team where egos and personal agendas are left at the door. I want teamwork to define this council, because the only way we can move forward is together. But teamwork doesn't mean we'll always agree, right councillor Lawrence? Nor should we. Debate the disagreements are essential, but we will attack problems, not each other. There's a great value in considering opposing points of view. These will not only be welcomed, but encouraged. As I look at this council, I see nothing but potential and endless possibilities. So, once again, congratulations and a much deserved round of applause for your 22-26 It's a profound honor to stand before you once again as the mayor of this great city. I feel like I'm home again. When I left eight years ago to pursue my political career at the federal level, I always hoped one day to return to City Hall. I believe that decisions made by local governments most directly affect the daily lives of our our citizens, and this is where my greatest passion lies. I want to thank the citizens of Belleville for the trust and confidence that you have placed in me. I remain humbled by your support. I have spent the last six years representing the citizens of Bay of Quinte, writing as a federal Member of Parliament. This experience encouraged me to step outside my comfort zone and grow as a leader. As your mayor, I am returning with a renewed sense of purpose and passion and a deep and unwaveringly committed to the citizens of Belleville. I continue to value inclusive leadership. I want individuals to flourish in a culture of inclusion and empowerment. The result will be a cohesive, forward-thinking, and proactive council. I believe that creating a culture where individuals can flourish and reach their full potential is the best way of unlocking the full potential of this city. A thriving council contributes their best, sees possibilities, not roadblocks, and gets things done. I also value integrity. A good leader must have honesty, accountability, and a strong moral compass. I stand here today and promise my council, city staff, and the citizens of Belleville that integrity will be embedded in all of my actions and decision-making. When I make a mistake, I will own it.[1219.23][1219.23](LAUGHTER) I'll get him back on his inauguration, right? So...[1228.01][1228.01](LAUGHTER) Yeah. Who? Sorry. Did I forget Paul Carr?[1234.47][1234.47](LAUGHTER) Sorry, Paul Carr.[1237.47][1237.47](APPLAUSE) Actually, maybe we gotta move you up one seat so I can see you, right? Yeah, thanks for that, Lisa Ann. Sorry about that, Paul. So... I'll lay that on somebody else, right?[1255.57][1255.57](LAUGHTER) Where do I start? I continue to value inclusive leadership. I want individuals to flourish in a culture of inclusion and empowerment. The result will be a cohesive, forward-thinking, and proactive council. I believe that creating a culture where individuals can flourish and reach their full potential is the best way of unlocking the full potential of this city. A thriving council contributes their best, sees possibilities, not roadblocks, and gets things done. I also value integrity. A good leader must have honesty, accountability, and a strong moral compass. I stand here today and promise my council, city staff, and citizens of Belleville that integrity will be embedded in all my actions and decision-making. When I make a mistake, I will own it.[1296.62][1296.62](APPLAUSE) The next four years presents an incredible window of opportunity to harness this collective knowledge, strength, and experience of this council to make a meaningful and lasting change in this city. I recognize the importance of infrastructure investment as it is imperative to economic growth and an improved quality of life for the citizens of Belleville. There's also an urgent need to address the shortage of family physicians. Doctor recruitment has always been very near and dear to my heart. During my last two terms as mayor, I worked with council to successfully recruit new family physicians. Since the program's inception, 43 new family physicians have been recruited. Unfortunately, hundreds of residents continue to be without a family doctor, which is why improving access to primary health care will be a top priority this term. Council has an obligation to take a leadership role to address this issue, and I promise to personally champion these efforts. The shortage of safe and affordable housing is also an all-time high. Finding solutions to this crisis will demand creativity and innovation. We must work with our provincial, federal partners to secure funding. There is money out there, and we must go after it. We must also recommit to investment in economic development and aggressively promote all the extraordinary things of this great city. While attracting new businesses will help us to grow and prosper, we almost have to do more to retain existing ones. Belleville has a bright future, and a good governance is the key to unlocking its full potential. I look forward to being part of the 22-26 Belleville City Council. Now let's make Belleville better together. Let's make Belleville the best choice, the best city in Ontario to live, work, play, and invest. Thank you.[1419.51][1419.51](APPLAUSE)
I'd now like to call on Councillor Tyler Alstopp to reply to the mayor's address.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for being here to lend your support at this inaugural meeting of the 2022-2026 Belleville City Council. In the audience today, I see friends, family, and fellow citizens of Belleville who came out this morning, and we all appreciate having you here, as we could not do what we do without you. Thank you, Mayor Ellis, for opening address to this chamber today. Congratulations to you on a successful campaign, and welcome back through your third term as mayor of the city of Belleville. I believe that I speak for all of us when I say that we are excited to work with you as head of council. As we get down to working on the business of advancing our city and addressing the challenges ahead, we look forward to learning from your experiences as a two-term mayor and Member of Parliament, and we are encouraged by the collaborative and open leadership style that you developed over the course of your political career. I would also like to offer my sincerest congratulations to my fellow councillors on your successful campaigns, some of us for the first times, and others for their fifth term on council.[1515.12][1515.12](LAUGHTER) I'll let you guys guess who's who.[1517.26][1517.26](LAUGHTER) Thank you to all those who ran to represent this city for believing in this process and for having the courage to stand up and offer your services. And a special thank you to those who have served and are not returning to council this term. We have all appreciated your hard work and for leaving this city better off than when you found it. As I look around the table at my colleagues, I am excited about the group of people that the voters have assembled here. A great mix of experience, creativity, compassion, and vision. As a council, we must remember why it is that we occupy these seats. We've been placed here to represent the best interests of the people of Belleville, Ontario, selected because of our individual attributes, but also because we were best able to speak to the issues expressed to us by our residents. It is important as we move forward that we recognize that no one member of council can make great things happen on their own. That it is only through our collective participation that we can bring about real results. This does not mean that we will be without disagreements. That much is inevitable and indeed integral to the process. But that where we disagree, we should do so respectfully, always looking for the solution that best solves the problem, no matter where it may come from. Let us take aim at our challenges, not at each other, and work together to overcome them, and through our collaboration produce solutions that are more elegant and enduring. We must remember that it is not about the personalities in the room, but instead focus on the people at home and fulfill our roles on council with the dignity and diligence that is expected from us. What we say matters, because our community is watching. The decisions that we make and the discussions that we have here can profoundly affect their lives. We owe it to them to bring our best selves forward every day when we enter this chamber. Belleville is in a great position today, but we are not without our challenges, many that are faced by municipalities all across Canada. We grapple with housing shortages and rising homelessness as we continue to rely on funding from higher levels of government that is either insufficient or unpredictable. Despite recruiting 43 doctors since the inception of the program, too many are still without a family doctor. We need more skilled labor and continued investment in critical infrastructure and asset management. As a council, we will meet these challenges head-on. I am confident that with this group, we can do great things. We have an incredible team of staff, dedicated professionals who are focused on making this city work, not just for today, but for tomorrow too. Together, we can build a better future for Belleville. Now let's get to work. Thank you.[1665.76][1665.76](APPLAUSE)
Mayor Ellis and Belleville City Council, on behalf of all city staff, please accept our sincere congratulations. This is a day for celebration, so I invite everyone to stay for reception with refreshments that'll be served shortly. We really appreciate everyone joining us today for these celebrations. I would now invite you all to join with council for any pictures that you want to take in the council chamber. The inaugural ceremony of the 2022-2026 City Council is now adjourned.[1721.57][1721.57](APPLAUSE)